I know there's a seat right here. Yeah, I told you someone would take it. Nah, I'm a standard.
Alright, hello everyone. Hello. Just kidding. Hello, can you guys hear me? Can everyone hear me? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start. Alright, thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and start. We are re-entering open session at 7:31 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Member Dr. Lopez?
Here.
Member Dr. Ko? Member Noick? Member Dr. Farzenay?
Here.
Member Flink?
Here.
Member Jacobs?
Here.
Member Abraham?
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda? No. Okay. Okay, we're gonna move to public comments. We will hear in-person comments in order that they were received. Each individual will have up to three minutes for their comment. The board secretary, Dr. Lopez, right there, will let you know when your time has expired. Public comments will proceed for one hour. Electronically submitted comments will be read to the board if time allows. All electronically submitted comments have been provided to the board and posted on the website. So what I will do is I will go ahead and read the names off of the roster that I have here, and once your name is read, please step up to the podium and you can start your comments and or statements. So the first person I have is Caroline Belinky.
Hi. My name is Caroline Belinky, and I am a parent of two current Niles West students and one Niles West graduate. I'm here today to support student voice as well as to use my voice to call out white supremacy, racism, transphobia, and homophobia expressed as hate speech and derogatory language. I was so sad to read yet another note today in the Niles West Parent Newsletter that hate speech continues to be heard at school. "Hateful rhetoric is on the rise in our community as individuals posing as concerned parents mount opposition to multicultural history and viewpoints and seek to limit public access to publicly-supported institutions in our community. This cannot be tolerated. Hate has no home at Niles West or in District 219. All students in our Niles Township Schools deserve a safe space for learning and to have their identities affirmed. Students should see themselves reflected in the books, curricula, and physical spaces of Niles West and of District 219. I'm not here to make political statements. This statement is not political. It's about educating the young people in our community, and one of the earliest concepts of education is that words matter. I'll say it again. Words matter. It is imperative that this board and this community reflect affirming language that is respectful to the lived experience of our students." Period. "I'm here today to call out the words of appointed board member Matt Flink. His District 219 Board bio, which is published on a tax-funded District 219 website, states that he is proud to have started Niles West as an Indian and graduated as a wolf. Last night, I shared my concerns with Matt about this language. I now know that the Indian-to-wolf phrasing came from the Niles West Administration in 2004, but readers of the website don't know that. One could read this problematic language as implied endorsement by the District 219 Board. One could read it as a way to call out the school's racist past. Unfortunately, I know that Matt isn't calling out District 219's racist past. In fact, Matt told me that the culturally-appropriated mascots of both Niles West and our shared alma mater, the University of Illinois, were quote-unquote 'taken away' from him. This fails to acknowledge that the governments of the United States and of Illinois and their institutions, like District 219 and U of I and other land-grant universities, systematically eradicated the livelihood and cultures of Native tribes. Right now, we are standing on land once settled by Potawatomi Indians. We are also standing on land that once allowed indentured servitude, and on or adjacent to land that was deeded to prohibit its sale, conveyance, or occupation to or by anyone who was not Caucasian. I call this out to acknowledge our racist past and to urge the board to make policy changes today to benefit all students, especially Black and Brown students who have been most harmed by past policies. Let's make District 219 a safe learning space for all students." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Sheri Amin Mashun. Or Shor, I can't tell, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Sheri Amin Mashun. I am a senior at Niles West and the current president of Black Student Union. I am honored and grateful to be here today, especially since many attempted to stop us. I want to address that when announcing we would bring our voices and ideas formally to the board, we were discouraged by teachers to not attend tonight. A board of education member who is present contacted me via Facebook to remind me of a chain of command that exists within a school district and that I should stay complacent within it, while another administrator emailed me to keep my thoughts about the position of Black students a private conversation rather than voicing them publicly and demanding accountability. But don't worry. This session is not an attack. It's us standing up for change. The primary function of this board is to make policies, which is exactly what I've come to propose today. First, we are asking for better recruitment and retention of Black staff. I'm curious. In the past 10 years, how many Black staff have been on a retirement track? After speaking with leaders who have been employed here for years, we cannot identify one. This is not only a loss of talent in District 219. It directly affects the environment and success of Black students. For the recruitment component, I would like to see a concrete plan outlining how the district will increase recruitment of Black staff. I'd also like to see how we plan to keep the amazing talent we have now. What supports are being put in place for our Black and Latinx staff? Because the current loss rate of those staff members is alarming. Our chief equity officer has done an amazing job, but I do not believe that one person should have to carry the weight of every one of our schools. If she's focusing on staff, then who is focusing directly on the students? Why don't we hire a second equity officer that focuses specifically on student growth and outcomes? Because there is a disproportionate amount of Black students getting Fs and Ds in this district. We develop relationships with educators who look like us, and then we have to say goodbye to them every two years. And at the end of the day, we can plaster hate has no home here, all tied on every wall, but it's the students inside that determine if our school will be a home or the opposite, which is why the Black Students United to create policies and share their stories. Soon, you will hear about a course that we'd like to design and mandate, but to take it a step further, we are proposing for a mandatory training for all staff in the district so they know how to prevent and respond to hate speech incidents so they can start healthy conversations and so they stop reading and using slurs in classrooms. These trainings should be on institute days. While I'm grateful for the Black staff, specifically Niles West Assistant Principal of Operations, the leaders on the Communications and Partnerships Equity Department, and all the staff surrounding me right now, I want to graduate from this district knowing that all the leaders are playing their part. The Black faculty members at West and North are doing what this board has failed to do. Listen, and I mean truly listen, to the Black and Brown students. They have created in-school affinity spaces. They have made time in their schedule to sit down, to listen to us, and to take notes. I would love it if my principal could do the same. And as a senior, I want to be at ease knowing that the grades after me will have unwavering support from their schools, from their district, and everyone seated on this board. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next commenter is Ashley Kobe.
Hi, my name is Ashley Kobe. In my years at Niles West, the biggest issue that I have faced is hate speech, specifically hate speech towards Black population. The N-word has been used as a way to spread hate against the Black population. The word was originally used in a time where Black people were seen as human. We were seen as subhuman, three-fifths of a person, and we were deemed as slaves. Over time, the use of the word has been taken and used in the Black community as a way to take back the power that was once used against us. This overall caused the word to stay alive and even be used by those who aren't of the Black race. Over the years of my time at Niles West, this one word has been used comfortably around me, towards me, and used against me, not only to me but many students that go to Niles West and Niles North. Though, the issue isn't just for us. This is for other identifying groups, including the LGBTQ community, the Hispanic community, the Brown Middle Eastern population community, and also those of other identifying groups. And they have all been used by perpetrators in the building. The infamous quote that "Niles West is a diverse school." But how can we back up and stand up for the many identifying groups in the building? A mandatory hate speech class. Yes, I'm aware that there is an African-American lit class and other culture classes that are built into the school, but obviously, these are all optional. The students that have caused controversy, that have brought Niles West and Niles North into the news and brought many protests are not gonna take these classes. You and me both are aware of that. So, to make sure that this calls down and that we protect the reputation that you guys hold so proudly of both of these schools, this class should be mandatory, the same way that public speaking and consumers ed are mandatory at Niles West. The first time that I was even given a great education about Black history and the use of slurs was in Mr. Weatherington's junior class last year for Al Kesh. That was the first time, as a junior, I got information about it. Yet, this was too late for many students who come from middle schools coming with saying slurs and saying words that aren't good for many students of many identifying populations. I am a senior, and I'm more than well aware that these issues will stay here by the time my eight-year-old sister joins one of the Niles West Township Schools. But I'm here to speak my truth and make sure this doesn't happen when she comes to the building. This mandatory class will highlight the use of slurs that have been popularized and used unknowingly in our daily culture by those who are ignorant to the fact. It will educate those on the true meaning and what these words mean and give context and hold important discussions about how those words will affect the lives of those who are of that identity. Niles West cares about its reputation that it holds, but with this step, it will improve it to make sure it doesn't get any worse. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Jasmine Sabagala.
Hey, everybody. Thank you all for coming out to support our beautiful Black children. I appreciate you all. So, I just wanted to say that before these brave children grace us with their presence, members of Abolition Coalition and Skokie Schools Equity Collaborative analyzed and shared District 219's 2015 to 2021 data during a press conference. According to D-219's data, the Black students are underrepresented, over-disciplined, and undereducated in D-219. Sadly, many of the Black students don't feel safe, valued, or represented in their own high school. The Black students and their allies held two protests during the last school year. This board didn't make a public comment in response to the student-led protests or the data that has been presented by your very own Jacob Knoll, a teacher here in this district, at a board meeting on April 7, 2021, in which he bluntly shared that there is a race problem in District 219. You all have to deal with the anti-Blackness that exists within this board and community. Anti-Black behaviors can be unconscious bias or motivated acts of prejudice like failing to respond to Black and Brown students, community members encouraging this board to only focus on the majority, the tolerance of underrepresentation, differential success by race, or adults telling kids not to show up to this meeting tonight to share their truth. It is inhumane to ignore the experiences of our Black students. Don't worry about who's not in this room, y'all, because y'all are here, and y'all came to set things right in District D-219. I just want to put that out there. I just had to say that to these kids. The kids have told us before, and now they are organizing and have gathered here because they are tired of being mistreated, underrepresented, disrespected, ignored, undereducated, and being exposed to anti-Blackness. To the young adults in this room, thank you. Thanks for being brave enough to help the D-219 leaders get it right by telling them exactly what you need. Thanks for sharing your truth and working together to let everyone in this community know that one of your civil rights guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States of America is access to an equitable education free from discrimination. Thanks for persevering and working hard in school even though you are not always treated with the respect that you deserve and don't always have access to a culturally safe space. Each of you are brave, smart, capable, and so much more. Skokie's future looks bright because of you. Remember to practice self-care. Always do your best. Never internalize racist stereotypes or racism. Vote in every election, and keep working towards being the best versions of yourselves. Finally, community members, anti-Blackness is a problem that we all must work hard to reject, address, and eliminate. Please educate yourselves. We know what we know.
That's the three minutes. Time's up.
Okay. It's important to understand that race constantly influences our history, society, relationships, and decisions. Race should never be ignored, and we owe it to all of our children to become racially literate community. We have to prepare ourselves to work together to help the current D-219 staff members and students stop the spread of anti-Blackness hate and bias in our schools and community. We are one Skokie.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Kayden Reed.
Hello, my name's Kayden. I'm here to talk about what it's like being a Black man at Niles West High School. I constantly feel the need to walk into this school feeling to put on a shield of armor for me to feel comfortable in my classrooms. I constantly need to feel to put on a or use my white voice to talk to my white teachers so then they can either, A, understand me or so it's easier for me to communicate with them. I also am here to talk about the education of Black history. For all of our knowledge, Black history does not start at slavery. Students shouldn't be learning about slavery and Martin Luther King, Rosa Parks, every year. I learn the same thing every year. I promise you, throughout my entire life of education, I've learned the exact same things during Black History Month. Black people are Black people. We're not only here to be shown throughout a month of February. Teachers aren't only supposed to teach us about our history during the month of February. We are supposed to be taught this throughout our entire time of education and more about it because there's hundreds of years of history of Black people that started way before slavery, and we need to learn about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Anisa Sabagala.
Good evening. My name is Anisa Sabagala, and I am currently a junior at Niles West High School. I knew there would be many students who wouldn't be able to come tonight, but their voices are important and deserve to be heard. Over the past week, I've asked individuals to sum up in one word how they feel about being a Black student at Niles West. An experience as difficult as ours is hard to sum up in one word, but we were able to form a list. Exhausted, discouraged, alone, invisible, angry, fed up, disgusted, antagonized, attacked, belittled, abandoned, unrepresented. But I want to end the list off with this one specific word, which is neglected. This board has continuously neglected the needs and feelings of Black students and staff in this district over and over again. Yes, we cannot forget the Black staff members in this district who feel the same way we do and are leaving this district each and every single year. This is a problem, and it needs to be addressed. We are tired of being called racial slurs in school and it being brushed under the rug. It is exhausting being Black at Niles West. Let's go back to February 18 of this year. There was a walkout held at Niles West in response to the anti-Blackness in the school community. This board did not once consider our humanity and reach out and respond to our list of demands. We need each of you to consider how your silence adds to the violence that we experience at school. There are many ways you could have responded, but you all chose silence instead of making the changes necessary that are needed for us to be safe at school. We're tired of feeling exhausted, discouraged, alone, invisible, angry, fed up, disgusted, antagonized, attacked, belittled, unrepresented, abandoned, and neglected in this school. Please do better. Your lack of action at the school board level deeply affects us every day. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Brianna R.
So, I just wanted to come here and say that basically, in the beginning of the school year, I'm a cheerleader, if you guys do not know, and I get on the bus to go home after school. And there was a problem with my bus route when I get dropped off in front of my house every single day. And that one day, the lady was not trying to drop me off at my house, and basically, I got called to police on me. I was about to get called to police on me because I was so-called being very disrespectful and so-called other things because I didn't want to get off the bus because I felt like, why should I get off the bus if I have to go home? Like, I don't understand. Sorry. Okay. But basically, what I really want to come here and talk about is how, on October 30, I got kicked off the cheer team due to something that was so-called all a mistake. It was all a lie, never said. And me, and I, basically, I got kicked off because I was in the lit center trying to get my work done, and me and my friend left early out of the lit center, and I was so-called claimed to be sneaking out the lit center to go to the bathroom. And I had got security called on me to come from the bathroom to go to the lit center. And basically, the lit center lady, which we are cool now, and I'm not gonna say who the person was because we're fine, but the lit center lady so-called claimed that I called her a B-word and other disrespectful slurs. So basically, I got kicked off the team and in-school suspension just because I said that and so-called other things. that and so-called other things that I'm very disrespectful. And last year, my, my school reputation wasn't the best, and I feel like it could have been better, but I'd done worse things last year on the cheer team and never got kicked off. And I just feel like that was like very petty and lame to, for me to get kicked off the cheer team. And I just feel like when it came to other people's consequences, it wasn't the same. And I take cheerleading very serious. If you guys haven't seen me yet, I'm pretty good at it. And I just, it really, I was very depressed. I didn't even want to come to school no more because I just felt like my whole life was getting taken away from me over some little misunderstanding that didn't even occur. And it's just like, and I know I can't get it taken back, but like, it's just, I'm back on the team, which is good, but I can't take it back because it's like, it already happened. But like, that month of me out of cheer was a lot because I just, it wasn't the right, like, I fell off of schoolwork. I couldn't even get back on track because it was really hard because I feel like I couldn't come to school because what was the point anymore? And last, a couple weeks ago in my geometry class, a kid was rapping a song and said the N-word, and when I got called out...
Kayden, where's ya?
Kayden was there. He could vouch for me. The kid said the N-word, and my geometry teacher told me to calm down. Told me to calm down. I wasn't even yelling. I probably did say some things I wasn't supposed to say, but I wasn't being disrespectful. I wasn't being loud, and he told me to calm down. And it was just, it felt really disrespectful because why should I have to calm down? So yeah, my name is Brianna, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Hosana.
It's Hosana.
Hosana, thank you.
You're welcome. There is no Black person here. I already feel uncomfortable. Let me start. For a school that's supposed to be an opportunity that my parents have sacrificed so much for, I feel like, I feel like it's not something to show off. Every time I find, like, my, I explain my school from my friends in Chicago, I, I can't even show it off. Like, I just be feeling like, ooh, like, this is not something I want to show off. Like, I hate going to this school. I hate going to this environment where I have to put on, like, a happy face, where I have to talk white, where I have to explain that the way I talk does not, like, it doesn't, it doesn't demonstrate nothing. Like, you're scared for what? I'm scared of you. You're, you're, you're inhumane. Like, you act so disgusting. Like, why are you acting like that in this century? It's sad. Like, you guys need something else to focus on because we are in this century and you're acting as if being Black is bigger than it is. Like, I have not done anything in my English classroom. This guy said the N-word. I, N-word, I just walked off because I was not going to be the angry Black girl. I was just going to walk off. I went to my dean. Nothing happened to the boy. He's still in my class. I don't know why. They said, oh, do you want to get off the class? No, I don't. No, I don't. No, thank you. I'm not going to be getting off my class because that guy couldn't respect what I, he, he, he literally, he couldn't see my boundaries. Like, what are you talking about? And he just stood there acting like he didn't do nothing. Like, what are you talking about? Like, you just said the N-word, and I just stood there flabbergasted, like, be so for real. You just said the N-word, and I had to walk out because you didn't walk out. You should be walking out. You should be embarrassed. They try, um, so, let me see. Students in Iowa feel alienated and segregated. It's like Black people only hang out with Black people because the white people are scared or like, they're just so uncomfortable. For what? I don't understand. They try to discriminate, and when you speak up, you're seen as a disrespectful Black girl. Oh, look at her. She couldn't talk to her teacher right. Why is the teacher disrespecting me? Why does the teacher feel like she could say whatever she wants? She can't, because I will say something back. Like, I'm not trying to play with no teacher trying to tell me to calm down when a student is being disrespectful to me and my people. It's different for us because everything, and I mean everything, we do, we get, the security is called. If a white group of girls go to the bathroom, nothing happens. They walk out not disturbed. A Black group of girls go in, and all of a sudden, hell breaks out. Security everywhere. Oh my God, I need security backup, backup. I'm scared. I'm like, what is going on? We got to get out of this bathroom. I'm scared. Like, I feel like every bathroom you go to, there's a security there calling for backup. Like, why, I'm, I am barely five foot. I'm not going to do anything to you. And if they hired you, you should get fired. Like, be so for real. So let's do better, and for the last time, let's not make our Niles West students uncomfortable to go to school. And that's why most Black students don't want to go to school because every time, we feel like we have to push to be happy, we have to push to do everything because the teachers don't respect us. The, like, the school is just so bad. Like, I don't know, like, it's just bad. And like, bro, I can't, like, our parents sacrificed so much, like, especially my parents coming from another country, like, wanting a better education for me and me having to speak up. America is overhyped because I wouldn't, I wouldn't have to be here to speak up because of my skin color. That's dumb. That's really dumb. And I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but if you, if you went through what we went through, you wouldn't even survive because y'all are complaining about skin colors.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Jaden Caroline.
What I want to talk about is change. To some people, change is just a word. To other people, change has meaning to it. And I feel like every time we have an affinity meeting at school, we always ask the principal to be there, and she's never there. I had a meeting with Ms. Ritter yesterday, and I, I asked her, why, why isn't she in the meetings? And she said that nobody told her that she could be there, and she said she doesn't feel welcome. Well, the last three, four meetings that we had, we've, everybody in the room asked her to come. So that's some form of miscommunication. And if you guys can't even communicate with your boss, then how do you expect change in the school? And another thing, so basically, I got in trouble in homeroom for saying the N-word. I didn't even recognize it, and I got written up. I had to write four essays, and they called my parents and told them that they, uh, that, like, I had detention and stuff. And so I got to school, and they had a white teacher come and talk to me about the N-word. And I'm sitting there, it's awkward. Like, what does this lady know anything about the word? We're just sitting there staring at each other. She doesn't even know what to say. Like, that, that's just not fair. And I just, I just transferred here September 27th, and I already see that this school is, is going through hell. We have so many things going on in the school, and they're either started outside of school and they bring it to school, or it started in school and brought to outside of school. And I feel like you, like, you guys administrators, or like, even like the deans, the principal, nobody is doing anything about it. Like, there was a fight the other day. Security didn't even show up at all. Where were they? Everybody just went to class, like, like it was nothing. And then, every time something happens, like, security, they always target us as Black people, no matter what it is. I could be walking in the hall, security's picking on me, but he's letting a group of white people walk right past him. Me, just one Black person, walking in the hallway while a group of white people walk, he don't say nothing to them. And I just feel like we need to see change in our school, and like, you guys need to
Thank you. Our next commenter is Victoria EJ.
Good evening. My name is Victoria EJ, and I'm a senior at Niles North High School. In my freshman AP World Class History class, a white student yelled out, "All Black people have AIDS." And the teach, we were watching a documentary, and the teacher, she was like, "Be quiet down, we're watching a documentary," and played it. At the end of class, I raised my hand and called out the student, calling his comment incredibly incorrect, as well as very racist. After the class, the teacher approached me one-on-one and called me brave, so that I was so strong for doing that. But why didn't she stand up for me? Why didn't she address it in front of the class? I shouldn't have to educate my entire class as a freshman when I'm supposed to be learning about history. I was watching a documentary. I was trying to say, like, pay attention in class, and that happened, and I had to stand up and say something to him, only for my teacher to commend me for being a strong Black woman to the side instead of addressing it in front of the class, which is why I believe we need more equity training in our district. And I appreciate how much, how far we've come with having Dr. Wells and hiring her and, as well as having some of our diversity, equity, and inclusion work. I'm, I'm proud of that, but I honestly feel like there needs to be more. Based on my peers and what they're saying at Niles West, it also occurs at Niles North, and I feel like too much has been swept under the rug. I wonder sometimes what would happen if I hadn't stood up? What would happen if we weren't here today and communicated? And that scares me. That scares me terribly. And with our equity training and the work we've done, there's pockets of it here and there among some teachers, but it's not enough. Like, the affinity spaces are great and all, but I shouldn't have to go to a Black affinity space to feel or be safe. I should feel safe in the lunchroom, which is unfortunately where I hear the N-word the most. And there's security guards in there, but they're not saying anything. And I feel like we need more racial equity training with security guards, lunch workers, and all staff members across the board at both, at both of our schools, both Niles West and Niles North. My hope and challenge to all of you is that a plan is fully implemented throughout the student body by the time my 11-year-old sister enters the doors of Niles North. I want her and all D-219 students to feel safe in every space they go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next commenter is by Joe Vleibek.
Hi, everyone. I hope you're all having a wonderful evening. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Bijou Lineback. I am a senior at Niles West High School and a Fairview South alumni. As I'm sure some of you may know, there have been multiple instances regarding discrimination at Niles West, Niles North, and the Nine-Feter Schools in these last few years. Despite the fact that this behavior has become so repetitive and typical, it shouldn't be the norm for our students, and it is certainly not acceptable. This includes constant hate speech, slurs, derogatory language, and students' inability to respect others' differences regardless of what they might be. We are here today to acknowledge the overwhelming presence of racism, but I want to make it abundantly clear that racial intolerance is not where it ends. There are many other marginalized groups at our schools that are experiencing similar problems, and they deserve justice as well. Less than a week ago, Niles West and Niles North were lucky and especially happy to welcome Mr. Calvin Terrell into our schools. He held three separate affinity spaces at both schools for those who identify as Black, Middle Eastern, and Latinx. In this, in these affinity spaces, students and in some cases, some staff were able to speak on their experiences as people of color. Before I continue, I want to thank you very much for that opportunity. I think I can speak for everyone who attended when I say that it was a great feeling to be in such a comfortable and welcoming environment with students and staff who share the same struggles as ourselves. With that being said, I would like to quickly mention that having faculty who look like us means more than you will ever know. And if you think for one second that we don't notice how many we are losing at our schools, you are greatly mistaken. And as a mixed-race student, I attended both the Black affinity space and the Latinx truth space, and after hearing each student share their stories, I knew I wanted to come here today and speak with all of you. There is a serious lack of diversity in our middle schools, especially among Black and Latinx students, and it is creating an environment of normalized racism that is not talked about and often goes unpunished. I graduated middle school as one of three Black students and one of four Latinx students in our class of 2019. This then carries into the high schools, leaving many students of color victim to racial slurs and hateful speech. I don't want to harp on what has already been said by those before me, but before we leave, I would like to ask the parents in this room to consider how you are teaching your children to be respectful of others, differences including differences beyond race. I encourage all of you here today to have these difficult conversations surrounding inequality and injustice with your families and friends because implicit bias, stereotypes, and hate speech are very prevalent within our classrooms and halls, and we have students here who are suffering as a result. We appreciate the opportunity to be heard, and we're asking for your help. We ask that you prioritize the comfortability of all your students, not just the comfortability of the students who are causing us harm. Thank you all very much for taking the time to be here, including parents. It means a lot to us, and we hope you have a great rest of the week.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Sid Stein.
Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have another big turnout again tonight. I'm a history teacher and also a parent to a 219 student, and I would encourage the people coming to the school board meeting tonight and speaking with all due deference to their emotions and their feeling, and those are all valid, but history is history, and when you start saying things that are just problematic in the history field, us history teachers need to speak up. For example, Indians refer to themselves as Indians, and it's a little bit arrogant of other people to tell them how they should refer to themselves as. Also, this notion that Potawatomi appropriated this land from other Native American groups. So, and that's just human history, guys, okay? And it's hard to call, it's, it's hard to call a place... Freedom of speech, yes? Oh, I'm sorry. No, freedom of speech is the law of the land. All right? And it's hard to call Skokie a place where white supremacy runs supreme, reigns supreme when the biggest groups are Syrian, Jewish, and Muslim. So I would encourage the people here to choose your words carefully, choose your language carefully, if you want to be taken seriously. Thank you very much.
Sid, please take a seat.
It's called words.
Sid, please take a seat.
Y'all did a good job. Thank you all for sharing your truth, and this is what we're living with. This is what we're talking about. Get him together. Somebody from this board should have told that man to sit down.
We just did. We just did.
Security!
All right. We have...
I'm sorry, but that was wrong.
It is wrong. Jasmine, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go to our final comment, which is a digital one. I think April's going to go ahead and read that, or is it Ray?
I'll read the electronic submission. This is a comment from Devora Heitner. I'm asking the board and the administration to consider the AAP recommendation since 2016 that high schools start no earlier than 8:30 a.m. Teenagers need eight to 10 hours of sleep, and their circadian rhythms make them not feel tired until after 10:30 p.m. Yes, teens can be at school at 8:10, but they are not always fully awake and ready to learn. The effects of sleep deprivation are cumulative and ser... The effects of sleep deprivation are cumulative and serious."
President Abraham.
Security?
Could you, could you excuse Mr. Stein from the room, please?
Is he gone? Mr. Stein? You're gonna have to leave. You're causing a lot of commotion with the rest of the people that are in this room. I, I would, I would kindly like for you to leave, if you don't mind. Do we have, do we have security? Okay, you're, you're, you're disturbing, you're disturbing the meeting. Sid, Sid, you're distur- Sid. Thank you. Can we have someone leave? Sid, Sid, can you kindly leave? You're disturbing the meeting, and you're making a lot of people feel uncomfortable.
Where's my freedom of speech?
Sid, you're making everyone feel uncomfortable. Can you please leave? You are dis- you are disrupting the meeting. You have to leave. You are disrupting the meeting, so you have to leave. Take off, please. Please. If you can, if you continue this, you may not be welcomed back for future meetings. Could you please leave? Please. If you want to be welcomed back to future meetings, you have to take, take a walk. Ray, can you start that over again, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
A comment from Devora Heitner. "I'm asking the board and the administration to consider the AAP recommendation six twenty, since 2016, that high schools start no earlier than 8:30 a.m. Teenagers need eight to 10 hours of sleep, and their circadian rhythms make them not feel tired until after 10:30 p.m. Yes, teens can be at school at 8:10, but they are not always fully awake and ready to learn. The effects of sleep deprivation are cumulative and serious. California moved all of their high school start times to 8:30 or later. ETHS has also moved their start time to 8:30 in accordance with the AAP recommendation. Students at ETHS are still able to participate in athletics and extracurriculars, and ETHS does offer early a.m. support to students who choose to come in early. Barrington, Illinois, has also moved to eight, to 8:30 a.m. start time. This issue deserves to be, uh, an actual agenda item, not simply a public comment. Please consider this as soon as possible as moving the start time by next school year is important for our students' physical health, mental health, and learning success. When students are sleep deprived, it affects their mood and their ability to learn. Consolidation of knowledge happens when we are sleeping. Car accidents go down when districts make starts, start times later. Anxiety, depression, and suicidal, suicidality, are increased with sleep deprivation. Risky behaviors and substance abuse are also increased when teens are sleep deprived. We've all seen the increased mental health issues amongst, among teens since the pandemic. Moving start times has costs, uh, but it's less, but is less costly than tuitioning more students out of therapeutic schools or dealing with the other costs, other cost, considerable costs um, of the adolescent mental health crisis. While the logistics are considerable, the safety, learning, and health benefits are worth it. Our schools are worth it. As a D-69 parent, I urge you to ask the Lincoln Junior High faculty about their 8:50 start time, about how their 8:50 start time is going in terms of student performance, mood, et cetera. We should also consider block scheduling, which is recommended by Challenge Success at Stanford, along with other measures to reduce stress and offer deeper, more engaged learning. I can share articles from NASSP and research from AASA. The traditional eight-period day was designed to train for factory work, and it is not ideal preparation for college or the 21st century workplace. Many neighboring high schools have moved in this direction. For example, all the high schools in D-2, uh, D-214 are in a two-year block schedule pilot as they saw so much benefit during hybrid remote school. Evanston Township moved to block last year, and Glenbrook North and South have been using block schedules since 2015. This approach to learning supports, uh, deeper engagement. There are mental health benefits-
Time's up. That's the three minutes.
Thank you. That was our last comment. You can sign up. You can just talk.
Hi, guys. Long time no see. Um, I just wanted to point out to you-
Let us just state your name.
Oh, sorry. My name's Jill Mandrik. I wanted to point out to you that none of this is new. I know, um, Matt, I don't know if you've been watching board meetings, but I know every single one of you, including the two that were too cowardly to show up today, were very aware that this issue has been looming for centuries, obviously, but in this district, it's been bubbling over for years. It's been bubbling over without any movement in addressing public comment that happened in 2020. Hundreds of them. It bubbles over now without any action from the board, and I take responsibility, because I was also part of the board at that time, to address protests, to address anything that most of the people in this audience have been asking for. This is happening after we passed up Jazz to be on this board twice. We had a chance, and we blew it. We had so many chances as a board altogether to stop the harm that we saw in here from happening, but we just never did it. Y'all would rather throw sanctions at me and change board meeting days at me instead of address the fact that Black people in this community are hurting and are continued, continuing to hurt every day. I don't know about everyone in here, but I'm shaking because that shit's real. That's the stuff that the kids face every day in school. That's the stuff that community members and parents are facing out in this community every day. And what you did, Naima, to get Sid out of here is what you, is what David, is what James should have done for the past four years for everyone that came in here and told us that there was no anti-blackness problem in District 219. That every student is treated exactly the same. That equity is alive and well here. Well, I will tell you right now, as a former board member, the word equity just drags at me because of the way that this board has bastardized that word to mean nothing. So please, all you've asked for, and I've been in these meetings, I've been in open, I've been in close, all you've asked for is, what are the, what are the kids saying? Are the kids gonna come say something? How are the kids gonna respond to this? We need to hear from the students. Well, you heard from the students. And they were so sad and so hurt. What else do you need? You need them to drag their pain in front of you? Y'all want to talk about diversity on this board? I said it a hundred times, and you can look at the transcripts. Diversity without representation is exploitation. And that is what's continuing to happen here. So like, please, for real this time, like, fucking do something. Because it is time. And leadership, the way that this district is run starts here in this boardroom. I thought there would be a change. I thought once a Soyay left, that we would do something. So Tom, please-
That's the three minutes.
Do something.
Thank you. That was the last comment, and that ends the comments section. Thank you to the visitors for coming. Um, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and continue to the next section, which is, um, our student representatives. Um, so we'll start with Niles West. Do you want to go ahead?
Good evening, D-2, sorry. Good evening, D-219 Board and Community Members. November was a truly productive month. November commenced with the annual National Honor Society induction ceremony. This year, over 100 Niles West seniors were inducted into the organization. November proved to be an extremely successful month for NHS, considering they held a canned food drive, a blood drive, and volunteered for the annual hot chocolate run. This month, many clubs embraced the spirit of gratitude. Student government partnered with the Mental Health Matters Club to hand out free turkey grams, and over 250 students and faculty members were able to share notes of thankfulness with each other. In addition to this, DECA celebrated their annual DECA giving and passed out over 100 kindness notes along with their DECA licious ice cream. Lastly, Muslim Student Association hosted its annual Friendsgiving, bringing in many students. November was an exceptionally busy month for many other clubs as well. West Helps Other went on a Feed My Striving Children trip where they helped, uh, helped over 2,700 kids, um, in need. Black Student Union organized a field trip for members to view Wakanda Forever film and, um, led an initiative to promote equity in the school. Our Niles West new staff attended the St. Louis National Student Press Association and Journalism Convention, where four of their members earned recognition. Lastly, Model United Nations was awarded Best Small Delegation at their past conference at St. Ignatius. This particular month, student government placed an emphasis on bettering the school environment and promoting positivity. Thus, they began November by sending out a survey titled Coffee for Your Commons to the student body in order to receive suggestions on how to increase school morale. Additionally, they began an initiative to create posters with positive codes for the school. The end of November marked the beginning of break when students and faculty alike were able to spend some extra time with their families and loved ones. As December begins, students are hard at work preparing for finals as they look forward to their winter break. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Board of Education and members of the District 219 community. In November, Student Council successfully hosted an amazing blood drive to provide for a nation that is currently experiencing a blood shortage. We had a good turnout of students and staff who were willing to support. Thank you to everyone who donated. Last week, Niles North Dance Marathon hosted its annual thrift store. Students and staff donated old or unused clothes and accessories, and they were sold, resold for low prices. Through this, they were successfully able to raise over $1,000 for their primary and secondary beneficiaries this year. As I mentioned in last month's speech, Calvin Terrell has inspired us to take action on our "Hate Has No Home Here" mantra. And last Friday, students were fortunate enough to have follow-up leadership workshops with him, as well, as well as Black and Middle Eastern spaces, which were open to all identities. In the leadership workshop that I was able to attend, we talked about, among other things, creating an action plan to address the harmful language and acts of hate that take place within our community. We hope to use the lessons he taught us to help eliminate hate within our school, and as you've heard tonight, that is needed. We are getting close to the end of an amazing first half of the school year, and as we are approaching the end of the semester, we are also approaching finals. Finals will take place on Wednesday, December 21st, through Friday, the 23rd, from 8:10 to 12:30, with makeup sessions from 12:40 to 2 o'clock. Students can check their emails for a link to a website with the schedule and more information about finals. It is understandable that there will be some extra stress and anxiety as a result of finals and the busyness approaching break. To lower stress levels this month, we are focusing on self-care. Students, Student Activities has created a wonderful calendar with ways to take care of yourself. Articles, including articles, TED Talks, and events. Some of the highlights include a diversity celebration that will be held on December 14th in the main gym, hot chocolate with the principal on Friday, December 16th, and our winter pep, winter pep assembly to sell, on the 16th as well, to celebrate winter sports, clubs, and activities. This calendar can be found in students' emails through the daily newsletter or on the Niles North website under Student Activities, so definitely check them out. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you to our student representatives for your reports. Appreciate it. Alright, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone need to remove anything from the consent? Okay. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. May I have a roll call?
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzaneh?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko? Member Noick? Member Abraham?
Yes. Okay, may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the board committee assignments as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. May I have a roll call?
Do you want to just do a quick sharing?
I think so, yeah.
It's just what's in the document?
It's just what's in the document.
Because I remember Flink is added to those couple committees, I think.
Right.
It was, it was.
Yeah, so, so basically, what we, what we did was, we had two, two vacancies, and that was, we needed a representative for the Equity Committee. So Matthew has graciously accepted that. And then the other one was Policy, and Matthew has graciously accepted that as well. So as of right now, we have Joe Noick and Matthew for Policy. We have David Ko and Joe Noick for Facilities, and we have a Dr. Farzaneh and, um, Matthew for Equity.
I'm not on a committee.
You're, you're not on any committee, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I didn't think you were. I don't, it, there's, there's, um, the administrative committees, and anyone is welcome to go to those, so those are usually-
What about the curriculum?
It's, it's an administration, yeah, they're all administration. So, you know, they, when they send out invitations, they usually invite, it's open to everyone. So you could always go to any one of those. Okay? Alright. Alright, um, next one. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the Resolution authorizing and approving notice to remedy to Jennifer Mills, a tenured staff member in the district? May I have a motion, please?
Do we need a-
We need to close the last one?
Yeah.
Just to-
Oh, so do I need-
Just to call, just to call it.
Do we need a roll call?
I think, I think so, yes.
Cause, okay. Sorry, I didn't-
Tom, Tom looks like he's got something.
Do you have?
New system. Okay, here we go. Um, just a correction is that the certain committees are not by open invite to all board members? Again, part of that, so one of the ones that meets pretty regularly, for example, would be the Joint Stipend Committee? And I apologize, I was walking in the middle of the conversation, so I don't know if everything was covered.
No, it wasn't, so I really appreciate that.
Okay, yeah, so typically, there's been two members, uh, assigned to the Joint Stipend Committee. Two members that will be assigned to the Insurance Committee. Team, I don't know if there's- CFC and CSSI, um, require two board members for each of those committees as well?
So we do require those, and you, so you need a vote from board members to pass anything? You do. Okay. Okay. So then this is not really finalized? Okay. So we'll have to come back and, and do more assignments? And get the rest of them assigned? Right. Right. He's not, he's not. I think, I think some of the vacancies has got, has caused those holes in, in those positions, is what happened. But, so just to be clear, so we need somebody for stipend?
So, um, so we could just submit for the record? We have CSSI, the Insurance Committee, uh, Joint Stipend Committee. You already named the Equity Committee.
Mm-hmm.
Was the TCSI named as well?
Uh-uh.
Okay, so the Technology Committee. What's the-
Green Club.
The GCSI, which is the Green Club?
Okay. And all of those require, like, board approval on some items?
Well, it, it comes back to those board representatives then come here to speak to anything that might be coming to the board as an action item and as part of the committee reports. Um, for example, the Joint Stipend Committee might have some, uh, bargained approved items that came out of that committee, but the board has to authorize and approve. Same thing from CSSI, you know, some of our core selections, for example, that were approved, the board authorized.
Right, right.
Those committee members from the board would be here speaking to that first, if any, anyone had questions and wanted to deliberate before making the vote.
Okay.
So, um, all those committees that were outlined-
Okay.
-are also named in our collective bargaining agreement.
Okay. Alright, so my understanding was we didn't need anybody on the administrative committees, but it sounds like we do. Alright. So what we'll do is at the next meeting, we will have assignments for the administrative committees then. Does that make sense? Alright. Well, I don't know that we need to table it. Yeah. Right. Yeah, we could just approve the ones that we have tonight, because the others are administrative, so they're slightly different. Alright, so can we get a roll call, please?
Sure. Uh, Member Dr. Ko? Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Noick? Member Dr. Farzaneh?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. Alright, now we'll move on to the next item. May I have a motion to approve Resolution authorizing and approving notice to remedy to Jennifer Mills, a tenured staff member in the district? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call?
Member Noick? Member Dr. Farzaneh?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko? Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. Next item, may I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the attached resolution of the Board-
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. Next item, may I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the attached resolution of the Board of Education of Niles Township High School District, Number 219 Cook County, Illinois, to sell real property as presented? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, and Tim, you're going to go ahead and give us a summary?
Yep. So, thank you very much. Yes, back in 2020, the board deemed our property that's located at 6119 Howard Street to be of no longer use to the district, and at that point, we, the district decided to put that property up for sale, and they followed the processes. That sale eventually fell through because at that time, the zoning wasn't appropriate for the use for the prospective buyer. So, again, that fell through at that point. Since then, my understanding is with that same buyer, between conversations between that buyer and the village have indicated, the village has indicated during these conversations that they are amenable to changing the zoning to fit the use of that property owner. That property owner presented a letter of intent to purchase the property. However, according to state law, we just can't do that. We have to go out to bid, and we solicited bids. We received one bid, and it happened to be from that same property owner, and that bid was in the amount of $2,787,500. All notices were complied with, all bidding procedures were complied with, and it's up to the board now to approve the sale of that property to 6119 Howard Street Properties LLC in the amount of $2,787,500.
Okay, does anyone have any questions, comments, remarks? Okay, I know we had that building for quite a while. How many years did we have it for?
I think it was originally purchased in August 4th of 2015.
Okay, and so now we're going to sell it, and at least we'll make some tax dollars off of it.
More than break even, and you know, again, the intent isn't to buy and sell property, it's just that we no longer have the use for the property.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Member Dr. Ko? Member Noick? Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. Next item, may I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the 2022 Tax Levy Resolution to instruct the county clerk how to apportion 2022 tax levy extension reduction, the Resolution Abating Debt Service Levy 2022, the Resolution Authorizing Application of Monies from Levy Adjustments from the 2021 levy, the Resolution Authorizing Application of Monies from Levy Adjustment for the 2022 levy as presented? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, and Tim, you're going to give us some details?
Sure, we gave a lot of detail. Kenya and I presented to the board on November 1st with regard to the tentative of tax levy. Nothing's changed since then. Basically, the process was is that at that meeting on November 1st, we proposed the tentative tax levy to the board, which they accepted. We put due notice in the paper of a levy hearing, and that levy hearing was conducted earlier this evening. That was complied with, so all the statutory requirements for the levy process have been complied with with this levy. And basically, what the levy is, it's a, the levy is, for the operating funds, the levy is in the amount of $159,000,32,600. That represents a 7.9% increase over last year's tax extension, which this extension, again, is the amount of taxes actually approved, actually received last year. As you know, the CPI that the school districts go according to was 7% this year. However, under the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law tax cap, that CPI amount is taxed at 5%. However, we are, we are asking for an approval of a levy in 7.9% because that's extra 2 point, I'll call it extra, that 2.9 on top, 2.9% on top of the 5% accounts for new property that would be collected that is unknown at this time, and that should cover that. Again, when the, when the county clerk calculates the tax levy next spring, the district will only receive what it is allowed to have under the law, no more nor less. And, but if we don't ask for enough, we don't, we don't get what the district might otherwise receive. So, the tax levy, again, requests for 7.9% for the operating funds. There's also another levy which has to do with debt service, which is, the debt service is what we would pay on an annual basis to pay off our bonds. As you know, the district did significant paying off of bonds over the last number of years in the amount, you know, exceeding $50 million. We only have one bond issue remaining, and that's less than $700,000. This year's tax, this year's debt, this year's debt service on that amount is less than $30,000. And in recent years, this levy proposes that the, that the, that the board pay that amount on behalf of the taxpayer. So as a result, the taxpayer, the tax levy for the debt service is zero. As you kind of alluded to earlier, there's a lot of associated documents. The first one is the tax levy itself, which is pretty self-explanatory. The next one is instructing the county clerk to apportion the tax levy if, if we don't get as much as we asked for. And again, we won't get as much as we asked for, as, you know, it's going to be some amount less than that 7.9% that we're asking for. What that second document does is directs the county clerk to apportion the reduction in taxes received proportionately among the different funds of the district. The third document is the Resolution Abating the Debt Service, where I, again, just referred to, that's allowing the district to pay that, that current year debt service on behalf of the taxpayer for outstanding bonds. The next two motions are, one's for the year 2021, and the other one is for 2022. The reason that 2021 one is still here is because we've received that information so late. Basically, what that, what that does is accepts the roughly 2 to 2.1, depending on the year of these two resolutions, that the district will receive for Property Tax Appeals Board reimbursements. Historically, if major companies wanted reassessments in their property and therefore pay less, the school district had to eat whatever it was that that, that commercial enterprise was, had their taxes reduced. In the last two years, the state legislature determined that that can no longer take place, and that the school district should be refunded those amounts, and again, in our school district, there are amounts to between 2 and 2.1 million dollars a year. So, we expect that that's going to continue over the next few years anyway. So, anyway, this resolution basically applies those funds to our working cash fund in the, in our, in our accounting. Any questions?
Can you just speak briefly to how this will impact the taxpayers? I've had some residents who called me and said, well, is this going to increase my taxes?
The answer unfortunately is yes. You know, it's just like, I mean, you see it everywhere. I mean, we're, we're under the same constraints that, you know, we all are personally. We're, you know, the price of the pump, although it's eased, you know, eased somewhat lately, but the price of goods is all going up. We've had our vendors, you know, we're paying more for our vendors because of, you know, the CPI going up, and it's impacting everybody. So we have to stay current with that. We still have to pay people, we still have to pay our vendors, we still have to pay for supplies and materials. So for existing taxpayers, it would be that if indeed the board approves the levy, for existing taxpayers, that amount would be the 5% increase. That extra 2.9% would be applied to whatever that new property number may be once we determine that next spring.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Nope, okay. I think it's good. Can I get a roll call, please?
Member Dr. Farzane?
So we've got five resolutions.
Oh, sorry.
So...
I read them.
So if you look on the, do you see them listed there on the back page?
Oh.
On the back page of the cover letter? It's in bold, motion to approve. See those?
I think these are the ones, are these the ones?
Motion to approve the 2022 tax levy as presented, and then motion to approve the resolution, blah, blah, blah. On the, on the very...
Where is it? Oh, sorry, it's actually on the laptop. I didn't have my laptop.
Oh, here, I got it.
I apologize. Okay. So I have to do all of these motions? Individually, okay. So we're going to go ahead and start with the tax levy, right, and then move on to the others?
Do we need a separate motion for each one?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, got it.
So we're going to continue with the first one that we just did, so can, may I have a roll call on that one?
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko? Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Noick? Member Abraham?
Yes. All right, now may I have a motion to approve the 2022 tax levy as presented? May I have a motion, please?
That was the one you just did.
Oh, that was, sorry. You guys have to separate these. Sorry. Okay, motion to approve the Resolution to instruct the county clerk how to apportion 2022 tax levy extension reduction as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. And you've kind of already spoke about all of these.
Yeah, I kind of covered all these, so, yeah.
So thank you. So go ahead and get a roll call.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Noick? Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Ko? Member Abraham?
Thank you, yes. Can I get a motion to approve the Resolution Abating Debt Service Levy 2022 as presented? May I have a motion? Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you. May I have a roll call?
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko? Member Noick? Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. All right, now I need a motion to approve Resolution Authorizing Application of Monies from Levy Adjustments from the 2021 levy as presented.
So moved.
I'll take Matt first, second, doesn't matter. Okay, Kenya, roll call. Oh, so I think first is Matt, and then it was Dr. Farzane second.
Okay, thank you. Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Lopez?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko? Member Noick? Member Jacobs? I mean, sorry, Member Abraham?
Yes.
Sorry.
All right, this is the final one. Motion to approve Resolution Authorizing Application of Monies from Levy Adjustment from the 2022 levy as presented? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Dr. Farzane, may I have a second?
Second.
Matthew? Can I get a roll call, please?
Member Dr. Ko? Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Noick? Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. Okay, now we'll move on to the next one. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the 2023-2024 school year calendar as presented? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
So we'll say Matthew was first, and then Lopez was second.
Yes. We're going to do a discussion about it.
Yeah, discussion? And you guys? Okay. So where, did I miss that? Oh. Okay, it wasn't in there, I apologize. I don't know why it wasn't in there, but it was kind of mentioned, but not quite the way that it's supposed to be.
It's okay.
So we'll go ahead and do the report card first.
So this is, I'm sorry. So this is, I'm not sure how often you've done this before, but the Illinois Report Card being kind of brought back after COVID and where we are as a district, it's important for us to talk about this, not just to get a snapshot, but it's also important the way we do talk about it. The results are fine. I mean, that's what Sandra's going to tell you. That's what we're going through, it's fine. We can have an energetic debate of what fine means, if we're okay with fine. The only thing I want to say as an educational leader, not just in this district, but in this state and this country, can we not keep talking about these kids that lived through COVID as if they're behind? Behind what? Behind kids that didn't live through COVID? No. There is no behind, there is just what is. And these children that are coming through, no matter their grade level, and I'm talking about kindergartners through kids in college today, have lived through something that nobody in this country have lived through for 100 years. And so what we need to do is talk about what can we do, not to catch up to some mythical goal line race. We have to stop the madness with kids in this way that we hold up these false pretenses, and we talk about how can we prepare them for a world itself that has been changed by a pandemic? And for their experience has been changed by a pandemic, because they're coming to us with wounds from loved family members that passed away. From wounds of being isolated and alone, and not with their friends. From wounds that go beyond anything we can simply measure, and they are where they are. So I think it's really important that we look at growth with these students. I think it's really important that we talk about where they are and how they're moving through. I just don't want to compare them to kids in 2018, because it's not fair. We can say that we can have a benchmark, that's fine, I don't care, but that's an unrealistic expectation. Not only that, these kids have also learned some things that kids in 2018 hadn't learned. These kids have had a resilience based on what they've had to go through that kids before haven't learned. I'm very curious how this generation will operate in the work world and as they go forward in their lives from what they've experienced during their formative years. And maybe I'm just speaking about this as a parent who had two kids who lived through this at different points in their own educational journey. And I, I just think it's important as we look at report cards and as we talk about education that we don't, we don't put expectations on kids as a group because we're always going to be talking about the individual. So thank you for indulging me in that. Sandra?
All right, so the Illinois Report Card is an annual report. It's released by the Illinois State Board of Education, and the goal is to show the progress around educational goals that not only the state, but at the district level and at the school levels we are seeing. We haven't seen the Illinois School Report Card in the way that it was meant to be precisely because of what Mr. Moore just talked, excuse me, talked about, which is the pandemic that our students went through. And the education that we had to provide to our students was different, so it wasn't appropriate to provide an Illinois Report Card. So 2022 this year, at the end of October, it was released again since 2019. So just a quick historical timeline on this idea of accountability systems in education. It all started with No Child Left Behind in 2004. We had that up until 2017. The focus with No Child Left Behind was on proficiency, achievement, attainment. So while there has been a recognition that it made us have the conversation, there's also been an acknowledgement now that, that didn't focus enough on the growth that students were making. And enter every student succeeds ESSA, where there was that focus on growth, which as educators, we were very appreciative of because it was something that we wanted recognized in our students, because otherwise, it was continuously feeling like students were not up to par, they weren't doing enough, when, when we looked at the growth, we saw that they were growing exponentially at times even between grade levels, and that wasn't being recognized. So we were thankful for that. With ESSA came the idea of Summit of Designations, which we'll talk about today. Going to our, through our pandemic years, 2020, 2021, there was a waiver of ESSA. And so while students took assessments, the Summit of Designations were not assigned to schools, which we were grateful for because we did not think that that would be fair. In 2022, we're seeing the return of ESSA, and we're going to see the Summit of Designations once again since 2019. And so again, along this historical line, and a bit of a reminder of the ESSA plan, what this did is it said that all states could come up with their own plans and take into consideration student growth. So I picked from the plan, which was from March 2018, the four goals in Illinois that are related directly to academics. I did include 3rd grade and 5th grade goals there specifically because we are a township. We are, I believe, responsible for those goals even at the high school. We are, I believe, responsible for those goals even at the high school level and more importantly, as, um, CFC members, right? We, this is something that we specifically look at through that programming as well. So 90% or more of third grade students are reading at or above grade level. 90% or more of fifth grade students meet or exceed expectations in mathematics. 90% or more of ninth grade students are on track to graduate with their cohort. And then 90% or more of students graduate from high school ready for college and career. This is a 15-year plan in Illinois, so the goal is to achieve these things by 2033. Um, but a couple of things I do want to point out that pertain to the high school. When we're talking about, uh, students, ninth grade students on track to graduate, also known as freshmen on track, this is a very important, um, uh, metric to take into consideration. This is something that has been studied. It comes out for a very long time from the University of Chicago, which demonstrates that students are more likely, we can predict the success of students in high school based on how they're doing their freshman year. And what they look at is, um, are students in five full year, receiving five, five full year course credits their freshman year? And we're also looking at no more than one semester F in a core course. Core course would be English, math, science, or social science. So new for 22 on the, 2022 in the Illinois Report Card. Um, so these, if you pull up the public facing, um, report card, you're going to be able to find all of these things on there. New, the Equity Journey Continuum. This is something we had not seen before. Dr. Carmen Ayala, Superintendent of ISB, is, this is one of her initiatives and it's something that she wanted to make sure we, we had on our report cards. So it's, uh, this year that we're seeing it on there. As I said before, we're seeing the return of the Annual Summit of Designations, information on career and technical education, and some of the factors that they consider underneath those, which you can, you can see there. Assessment data, including participation rate. For, for instance, how many students are sitting for those state assessments? And then the proficiency rate. So while ESSA does consider growth, it didn't do away with proficiency. So it's important to also consider that we're looking at both. And then also, uh, teacher certification. How many national board certified teachers are there in a district in a school? And how many teachers with gifted endorsement? In addition to the quantitative, there are opportunities for narrative and qualitative, uh, indicators, including the district provided statement. So if you go on there, you will see that District 219, we provided a statement to describe our district. The Equity Journey Continuum, there's also an equity statement that will be on there and also an explanation of the Summit of Designations. So how are these designations assigned? This is very important. Um, the process is pretty thorough. It's pretty lengthy. And it involves, first of all, schools have the opportunity to review and verify data. We're very grateful for this because our principals were able to catch some errors and they were able to correct them, which then also placed us on, with the accurate designation. There's a comparison to those Illinois ESIGs, four of them I shared with you. All schools and demographic groups. A demographic group is if there are 20 or more students in that group. So all schools and demographic groups are given a score. In District 219, we represent almost every demographic group, which is not common in the state. Um, they often use us as an example to say this is a place where all of the demograph, most of the demographic groups are represented. Schools, all of the schools in the state are then divided and ranked from top to bottom based on their Summit of Scores. So where we land does depend on where other schools and other, um, places are landing. Uh, and finally, the designations are given to all the schools. So Nows North and Nows West received a, an annual Summit of Designation for 22, 2022 of commendable. And as we can see there, it means that the overall performance is not in the top 10% of schools in the state. But we do not have any underperforming student groups at or below the all-student group of the lowest performing 5% of schools in the state. And then also, our graduation rate is higher than 67% at both of our schools. Now here is the way that, um, we, that rating is assigned. 75% is academic indicators. So English Language Arts proficiency, and you can see the percentages there. Math proficiency, science proficiency, graduation rate, rate, and English learner progress to proficiency. 25% is connected to chronic absenteeism. Climate survey, and I'll explain these a little bit further in the next slide. Uh, we talked about ninth, ninth graders on track to graduate. College and career readiness and fine arts are italicized because those will not be added into the Summit of Designation until 2025. So here is a summary of what we have. I'll just let you look at that for a little bit and then I'll talk through some of the things, um, that we want to point out. So for English, Language Arts, and Maths, um, we are looking at a proficiency rate. So the attainment, um, the achievement of students on the standardized test, SAT. For science, there is an Illinois Science Assessment. But I do want to point out that this score for this year only is based on student participation and not proficiency rate. Beginning next year, it will be proficiency rate, but that's very important for, for everybody to know. So that science score is based on participation rate of students sitting down and taking the Illinois Science Assessment. As you can see, our graduation rate, as I stated before, is above 67%, which is what the state looks at. Our EL progress is looking at what percentage of our, uh, English learner students are exiting after five years. Exiting an EL program means that they have a, um, acquired proficiency in English based on the access test. Now, a couple of things to say about this. We're looking at five years, right? But if we get a student come to us in high school, you can do the math. We don't have five years with them. So it is difficult for us and for the students to acquire proficiency. It doesn't mean they're not making progress, though. So that's very important to note. We also have students who are coming to us with one, two, three, four years of, um, being in an English learner program in their center school. So then that is still connected to us. So those years of being in the program, that translates over to the high school as well. So, um, there is, for each of these, as I'm sure you can imagine, there's a lot of, uh, a lot to unpack, a lot of data to review. In terms of, you know, having been a director of EL, having worked in EL programs in the past, there are many, you know, things that I see here. And I also understand the situation that, that we're in because we don't even have the five years to exit students from the program. Absenteeism. So that is for students who have been absent, uh, more than 10%. And this includes excused and unexcused absences. The climate survey is how many students, um, again, this is participation rate. How many students, uh, did the five essentials? So it's not even what do students think. It's just based on how many students participated, and you can see that there. And then you see again the ninth, ninth graders on track. And so this is one, um, definitely, I mean, many of these, right, but especially the ninth grade on track because we know the predictability that it has for students. One for us to celebrate because, um, as you can see, the goal of the state is in, by 2033 to get to 90%. And we are, um, as a district, our two schools are pretty much there. Okay, and the last, um, slide to show you is the, the new, the new data that appears on the school report card, the report card Equity Journey Continuum. It looks at three, uh, goals: student learning, learning conditions, and elevating educators. And it's placed on this, um, what they're calling step levels to show where there are large gaps, moderate gaps, small gaps, and minimal gaps. Um, this one, I will be very honest with you, is one that we need to dive deeper into because it's new. Uh, the data is available to us at a district level. It's not public in how they calculated this. Uh, but based on what they have determined at the state, the elevating educators is where we see small to minimal gaps, which is a good thing, but we want to understand then, if we have small to minimal gaps there, then how can we connect that to student learning and learning conditions? How can that be applied over to those areas where we're seeing, um, in student learning, small to moderate gaps, but in learning conditions, primarily moderate gaps? I also did provide a link for, um, the public facing site on the report card. There's much more information to go into there. You can also see there's a, under academics, there's achievement gaps. You can go in there and see the various categories. You will notice that, you know, no, we do, we do have achievement gaps. Uh, the one where we have the widest amount of gaps is in our IEP students versus non-IEP students. But again, with every single category, there is a lot to, uh, dig deep into. And, um, for this year, we'll be coming back to you in the spring because in working with our principals, this, this, uh, should really be the part of the school improvement planning.
Guys, excuse me, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So thank you for this. I think, I think the data, you know, for me are always important, but I think what's most important is how we, as teachers, leverage this information and the cadence or rhythm by which I, as a teacher, have access to sort of an iteration of this work. So that it isn't a year later that I know that we're failing or falling behind. So can you just walk us through, you know, sort of the, the tools and strategies that, that our teachers are, are, are using or accessing to then go make the sort of changes in their instruction, et cetera, that they need sooner than later to support learners?
Yeah, so it always, the work always does really, um, as you're pointing out, it needs to be present in the school buildings. And that's where our principals have developed school improvement plans, and this year's not going to be any different. I know, for instance, I won't put you on the spot, but I know Dr. Edwards already talked about he's going to be reviewing the Illinois Report Card. I don't remember. Mm-hmm. So, um, that's, you know, for instance, one of, one of the first things is to get the information out there, right? And to explain how is, does this come about? Since we haven't seen this since 2019, I think it is an important year for us to revisit this conversation, to talk again about ESSA, what the goals are, and how we get to that Summit of Designation. And how important that ninth grade on track is. I can tell you from being in instructional leadership team meetings, that is a conversation that, that has been coming up. And I know, Dr. Edwards, because you're here, that's something that I've heard you talk about a lot with your leaders. So, yeah, we just need to do more work in having the conversations and creating strategies and goals around this.
Right. I'll just add, you know, that was a big push for, um, why the buildings wanted to have administrators, um, be targeted in freshman study halls because that was, um, a highly weighted category for ISB, plus as Dr. Aragorn mentioned, it's a high predictor of success, uh, for our students. So taking this information at the broad level, sharing with the board and the public, and then drilling it down to building level, to departments, is our next level of work so that we are targeting our interventions appropriately based on the data. That's an area of, of success, but when you look at IEP versus non-IEP students, we see a gap. So my job is to distill down with my team, why is that so? Well, we know students are in the general education setting more than they are in self-contained, contained settings. So we have to partner with all the departments to say, how can we further support students where we see the biggest gap? So that, those are just a few examples of how we take this information and distill it down so that we are targeting and providing interventions to close those gaps that, um, are being identified based on the measures.
If I could jump in on that, um, because Bridget, today in a conversation, we talked about gaps, and where do we see the largest gaps? And, and, you know, our special education students and Bridget, because she's an exceptional educator right away, said, this is my fault, or I own this. No, we all own this. And that's the piece that we have to look at educationally is how do we own that, that gap area for those students? But you get to a bigger question fundamentally. And I've been in a pre-K through 12 district where third grade, I'm looking at reading scores all year long. I know exactly where the kid was, where they are, and where they're going. And if we ask high school teachers about that, well, that doesn't really apply to a government class, but does it? And what does that mean for our grades? And what does that mean for our grading systems and how we look at kids? One area that I stress for everybody to look at, the greatest test analysis tool, I think the United States, is the PSAT results. When your kids get the PSAT results, you take that booklet and you dive into it. And it will tell you piece by piece what areas they need to work on. And then what's great is PSAT is partnered with, um, Khan Academy so that I can feed that in. It knows where the weaknesses is. And all my study sessions, and people think of studying, you're not studying for the SATs. That's not what Khan Academy's about. It's targeted for those areas that you've shown weakness because they've loaded in your test results. I know we all want privacy, but that's an unbelievable tool for our kids that we need to access more. And we need to look at score reports like that and talk about what does that mean for my test? You know, for teachers, an assessment, we so often act like that's the end. But it's not. That's the, that's where we have to, as however long we take on an assessment, we should be taking at least a long going through that assessment. And every teacher should know, because if I think everybody got 95, boy, that's great. Everybody got everything they knew. But if the five points they all got off was the same thing and it was the most important thing, then that's not where we need to be. So we really need to look in how we're assessing kids at the high school level, because you gotta be a little bit more clever than you are at the elementary level, which I think gets to also what you're talking about.
I have a question about the, uh, climate survey. Can you talk to us about what that exactly entails? Is it connected to what we heard tonight?
So, um, the Five Essentials is an annual survey that is, you know, is put out for, uh, students, families, and staff members to take. We only get results on, on it if 50% or more of each group participates in it. It's pretty extensive. And so it's also based on a lot of research coming out of the University of Chicago as well. And it does measure five areas, and it's in terms of leadership, it's in terms of climate and culture. So there is a lot of research to support it. I would say that, um, I mean, obviously, that's the data piece, the quantitative data piece, and, you know, we can't disregard the qualitative data piece. And, you know, that's an, what we heard tonight is an example of that.
Just to add, it, it touches a little bit about climate and culture in the building, but not to the level of what we were hearing, hearing tonight. We do, um, have, uh, surveys that we have administered to the community, including parents and students and staff, um, specifically on equity, which will be more to come. We've talked about this as a board. Uh, we administered it last spring. We were, um, working with Hanover to blend the equity dashboard that they compiled for us as a district and this report, which they have been, uh, finalizing for us. So more to come on, on those two pieces, which will be another data point. This is just what the state of Illinois looks like for all districts in measuring climate and culture.
Should we expect, uh, the Hanover report?
Uh, well, uh, hopefully, January if possible.
Around December, right? If I'm not mistaken.
I can't, possi, possibly.
Does anyone else have any questions or, no?
Can I just, the only thing about the Essentials? Anthony Bragg, Organizing Schools for Success is the name of the book. In the same way that we talked about iteration and, so like, you know, there are tools that allow us to sort of gauge where we are incrementally and or where we need to, those targeted interventions. That mindset that our teachers, that are, are, our folks in the buildings have. The Five Essentials allows us to, at the administration level, leverage that perhaps as a smaller tool as well, so that you can also have these sort of moments or iterations of, of where, where are we getting better at climate and culture? And then you can unpack and, and sort of dissect those data by race, ethnicity, et cetera. Assuming that the district puts its arms around what this tool can, in the same way that ESEA can help us in navigating learning gaps, the climate and culture or Five Essentials can also help us navigate culture, uh, climate gaps, and then also think more deliberately about when and where interventions are working for particular populations in our district and or not. And so this, just, just, it's a habit, right? It's a, it's a mindset of how we leverage and understand, uh, these tools. That's all.
Yeah, thank you for that, Dr. Lopez, because it is something that, um, it's, we don't look at just one, one data set, but we do begin somewhere. And I do, uh, believe that the Five Essentials is a really good place to start. Of course, everything- Of course, everything else that supports that, and we look deeper into things. But it is, it's been shown to be a very great predictive tool as well. And to give a very good survey of what's happening in terms of rigorous instruction even is one of the categories in it. So it is something for us to look at and then dive deeper into.
It does require like a commitment from our community to say, hey, we really want you to engage with this resource and tool. And this is why, because this is how we want to use it or leverage it. So please, take the time with your families to engage and do this. Yeah. I do want to say one last thing and then I'll be done. It connects back to the report card. I do feel, and I'll just put it out there, it sounds like the district is working through this. I'm looking at my colleague here to validate my statement around writing and critical thinking at the university level. I work at the university level. We're seeing an influx of undergraduate students coming to us, struggling with academic writing and critical thinking. And it's a curious thing that it's not just my institution, that I would gather here that, as Farzane as well. It's a really curious thing that's happening around writing and critical thinking. So how we might sort of zone in on the ELA or the portions, I think it was SAT or PSAT that does the writing. Because that's where you're talking about your history teachers, writing teachers, English teachers, all sort of folding onto the same page around how we view these sort of skills for a successful future and jobs, right? Because we want our students to be successful at university. But I need all you, at least there with me, to go get successful jobs. And my students will say, well, why can't I just write like this? And it's like, well, you're writing like you're texting. And it doesn't, I need you to, it doesn't work that way. It doesn't work that. Anyway, so I just wanted to comment on that, where the writing comes in in some of these assessments as well.
Yeah, I just, this month, I've heard about this a couple of times. So I'm really interested, especially from curriculum and instruction side, to learn more about this. I'm curious to see what exactly it is that you're noticing at the university level.
It's at the office too, at the work level. The critical thinking is really, it's more lacking today than it ever has been in the past. So it's an interesting.
What is happening, and I'm not sure if this is happening in K through 12, in this instance, ninth through 12th grade, is the dumbing down effect that we're not expecting as much from our students. That's happening in my own institution. And that's something that I've always, you know, been in conflict with people that are going that route, that you can't keep these students here forever because they haven't been prepared. I get that. But at the same time, by giving them a passing grade or giving them a favorable grade that they don't deserve just because they show up or not, because they're going through life difficulties, I feel like we're doing a lot of disservice to them. And I'm just curious if this is actually happening at a high school level, if we want to get these kids going and, you know, have that graduation rate? Because that can, that can be very, very problematic. And I think one of the things that's happening, it's just that, is the feeling that we have to pass them because we're acting like a quickie cutter sort of a situation, unfortunately, in our educational system. And that's very, very dangerous. And that leads to students that cannot critically think, like Dr. Lopez is saying. And they can't write, they can't make their arguments heard. And no matter how street smart you are, it comes down to being able to take, you know, in text, you can argue a case. And if you can't do it, you're gonna fall behind. And that's where equity, you know, comes in. And the group that's been always favored is gonna keep winning and get ahead.
Well, it's a good segue to our last slide about empower, right? E, exceeding expectations. The board has set this forth. This is a priority for us as a district. Therefore, it's a priority for the buildings and teachers and curriculum directors that we have high expectations for our students.
And just, I just want to make one more remark. When I do see candidates come through the door and I see that they've graduated from District 219, I just have to let you know that they generally are better communicators than those that are not District 219. So we are, we are pretty good at what we do. But I, you know, like any other district, I think there's, you know, and especially with the pandemic that had just occurred. And I think, you know, I think we've always been really better than most of our schools. And I think we continue to do that. So thank you for all the great work that you guys do. All right. Next, we're gonna move on to this one, right? Because I don't have my calendar. Just want to make sure we're on the right one. All right, next. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve 2023-2024 school calendar as presented? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, remarks? Nope. May I have a roll call, please?
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Noick? Member Dr. Ko? Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. All right, next. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to waive the school fees for the summer of 2023? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And we're gonna hear some details behind that real quick.
Sure, as the board knows, since nearly the beginning of the pandemic, the board has, in order to provide relief to our families, they've waived various fees throughout the last few years. What we're coming to the board with this time is the three fee categories. Summer school fees, regular school fees, and summer camp fees are on the agenda coming up here. One of the things that the administration is recommending for all three of these categories is to waive most all of the fees. And I'll get into it item by item, or Kenya and I will get into it item by item. With the rationalization that, okay, we just passed a levy in the amount of to the average taxpayer in the district, a 5% increase. We're recommending that the board waive fees this year to provide additional relief and to, and what would support the loss of that income. We're looking at just under $2 million of revenue lost by waiving these fees. But that is made up for by this recent change in the law where we're getting this reimbursement from the state for the property tax, the property tax appeals board settlements. So that's kind of the rationalization here. So to start off with summer school fees, typically, we, the revenues for summer school fees are, you know, it depends year to year, but roughly in the $250,000 range. If the board decided to waive those fees, that's about what we'd be foregoing in this category. Any questions at all?
All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Noick? Member Dr. Ko? Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. All right, next. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to waive the 2023 summer camp fees? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Pretty much the same rationale. We're looking at, again, it depends on participation, anywhere from 150 to 200, maybe a little bit more that we'd be foregoing in this category, so.
Okay, awesome. Any questions on this?
It's the same as last.
Same as last, yeah. We're good.
Yeah, this is all, these are all the same as what was approved last time.
Awesome. Okay, can I get a roll call, please?
Member Noick? Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko? Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. All right, may I have a motion for the Board of Education to waive the school fees and busing fees for those living within one and a half miles from the school? Fees would remain for parking and behind the wheel instruction as in preceding years. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We can just move to a roll call.
Right. The same thing, I just wanted to clarify that we are still, we would still be keeping the fees for parking and for behind the wheel, just to make sure that you understand that.
Yep. Can I get a roll call, please?
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Noick? Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko? Member Abraham?
Yes. All right, that ends that agenda.
Thank you much.
All the consenting agenda, thank you. Next, any new business anybody wants to present? No?
I just wanted to make a comment based on our, what we heard tonight from our community. My understanding is that at some point, this board will hear a bit more of the direction that, and I'm appreciative of our superintendent's communication to us with regards to your ability to sit in and meet with our students and the families and affinity groups, et cetera. I think that that's great. I think to an extent where this board may also, at some point this year, it sounds like there will be presentations of the Hanover data, other equity approaches, sort of unpacking staffing by race, et cetera. Those sort of metrics, I think, will be helpful for us as a board. I think it's an annual thing. I just wanted to make sure that we're calling it out as a board and that my understanding is that we'll do a deeper dive into those data in the new year. And then we can, you know, get deeper at supporting our students and really sort of digging deeper into our equity comments and concerns in the district.
Agreed.
May I? One of the students, I think it was Victoria, said something about the feeder schools being just as bad as we are, based on what she was saying. And it makes me think, is there any way for us to get together with the board members of these districts to sit down and kind of talk through what can we actually do? Because I've heard this problem existing. We heard it tonight. I've heard it from previous students that have come to Northeastern and beyond. And it really breaks my heart to, you know, sit down and listen to this. It's real, we know that. Racism and Sitzstein kind of demonstrated some of that unfortunately here. So that could be something that we could probably discuss or, and like Dr. Lopez was saying, we like to see where the school, where the district is gonna go with this. And also, he said he's a history teacher here or? No, he's not a teacher here.
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Yeah. That is something that I think I've discussed with other board members. And we always wanted, we've always had this wish to have, I don't know if it's like presidents and vice presidents and maybe secretaries, and just get together with the leadership of the other boards from the feeder schools. Just never, we've, as long as I've been on this board, we've never had such a thing. But I've always thought it would be kind of nice just to be able to hear their thoughts on and what kind of issues they're having. And that way, we could be better prepared with those incoming freshmen that we have every year. So I don't know how, maybe you have some thoughts on how to make that happen through your office? I don't know.
The issue with it is you can't have an illegal meeting with, so like you said, it would be a couple members. You could have, you could invite a couple members and a large group to have a large meeting with maybe two members of each meeting. That way, it's not a, you're separating it out. You're not speaking for the whole board, you're speaking as a representative. So it wouldn't be a functional of this entity. I do meet with all the superintendents of all of our feeder schools. I actually have a meeting with them on Thursday. I've had these discussions. It's a very different system than Connecticut. When I, all the feeders would have been under my auspices and that board. So it's a, yeah, it's different here. That's a struggle.
So their independence effectively does cause this train wreck when it gets here?
Yes.
I, I understand what you're saying. I, that's not, it wouldn't, I don't know them well enough to put that on people because I've, this conversation of what happens here, we could be having in many towns and many states across this country.
Right. But I think like there's a different type of a need for you to get together with the superintendents of the feeders. And I think it would be a totally different kind of a dynamic with the board. So I think it would be very beneficial for board members to meet from all schools.
Maybe the equity committee members, you know, there's two of us, so.
Right. Maybe definitely that you guys could work on. That'd be awesome. Great discussion. All right, I think we can then move on to your report.
Sure. You know, I'm not gonna go through and congratulate people, just, a lot of good things have happened, but that would seem to be whistling past your graveyard. I'm sorry to each child that spoke. If you want to know who to blame, you can blame me. I'm in charge. And I took this job. I wasn't, I wasn't ignorant of the issues that have cropped up here over the years. In fact, it's why I took this job. I wanted this job because I want to make a difference in my life. I have a finite amount of days. It would be easy for me to say to people, be patient, give me time. I've only been here five months, but it's been 400 years. Racism is the original sin of our country. And to each child that spoke, I'm sorry. And I will do everything in my power. Anybody that's known me in my career will tell you, I do not sweep things under the rug. I will be guilty of a lot of things, but that ain't one of them. And I can tell you right now, I'm not shy about confronting things. The only thing I'll say to everybody that says we need professional development, I've looked at all the professional development we've done. We've done a lot. You know, this is the problem with the metrics. I can show you guys all the metrics. We look good. Like, I mean, that's the problem. All the metrics say we're fine. Not just fine, we're better than most other places. Look at the last slide on the Equity Journey here. But the kids will tell us something different. It's up to us to listen. And it's up to us, and I'm sorry, but there's a point where it just comes down to, if you hear the N-word in your class and you don't do anything about it, then this isn't the place for you to work. And that's where we are. And that's where it's gonna be. And that's how we're gonna operate. Because we can't put kids through that. And if these kids, within three years, when my contract's up and they're coming forward, you won't have to vote not to renew my contract because I'll walk out of failure. And I won't have done what I came here to do. But I promise you, inaction won't be our, won't be our problem.
That's why we hired you. Thank you. All right. Do we have any board committee reports? I don't think they have any, have, Matt, really? Okay, thank you. Information FOIA, the information for FOIA reports and multi-financial reports have been provided. And that ends our meeting. May I have a motion to close session at 9:32 PM? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. May I have a roll call?
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Noick? Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Member Dr. Ko? And member Abraham?
Yes, thank you.